All right, it is six o'clock. We're going to start the pledge.
I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Before we get into reports, just one announcement or a housekeeping matter under new business, Item H, the policy manual for the police department. And Paul, I meant to talk to you about this, and I got caught up in what these fancy buttons underneath the desk do. I did ask if we could pull that. We're going to put it on the next agenda. That way Jennifer can send out the policies so that everyone can review them before the meeting. So I had a misunderstanding of how they were available up front for people to review. So she's just going to send those out for our next meeting, and we'll get those approved there. Looking then at the council activity reports. Mine's fairly brief. We had our working session, the minutes of which we're approving tonight. And then we had a policies and procedures meeting where we discussed a number of things, including those police department policies. The other thing we talked about was the potential for an employee assistance program that was born out of sort of the wellness programs for police and fire, and whether or not we could do something for the rest of the city employees. And Tarek looked into that, and our health insurance company already offers such a program. So he made sure to send out all of that information to everyone so that we've got the benefit without the added expense of it. So that's great. That's all I've got. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hertzberg.
All I have was the monthly meeting at the Green Roof Center. And they're trying to get programs going, doing the best they can with the situation we're in. They did get a grant for a walking class with an instructor. And this should be something they're starting fairly soon. And they're looking for more people to participate in the programs, in the senior dining, and what they do offer, a lot of programs for people 60 and over. So that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brick?
Well, we had the council working session. We talked about some public works purchases in the mobile home park. It's just our priorities going forward. We had an E-DAP meeting where we talked about deferments possibly, and some assistance to businesses that are struggling with COVID, and some possible industrial development in town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sykes?
I too was at the E-DAP meeting and the working session, and then we had a planning commission meeting last Monday.
Was that as fun as the last one?
Oh, it was pretty sh- it wasn't as long.
Councilmember Tealyn?
I have nothing.
You were with me at policies and procedures. We have that at least.
Yes, that was right. Okay, yeah, that was.
All right, and we'll turn to our department head reports, starting with Chief Soini from the Fire Department.
Good evening, everybody. I have calls for November through January. Basically, we had 18 medical assists, three car accidents, three fires, one CO alarm, and three mutual aids, totaling 28 calls. And then for the whole year of 2020, we had 139 calls, which is typically about 40 more than we usually have. So we had a high number of calls last year. We do currently have four firefighters going through firefighter one and two, and they're attending classes in Belgrade at this time. And the trainings we've done over the last three months, we've done bloodborne pathogens through the Ridgewater College and hazardous materials. And then we do a water rescue training on Lake Cronus. And then we did a walkthrough of the museum on one of those evenings for our trainings. So that's pretty simple on what I've got. And anybody have any questions or concerns?
Any big trainings coming up that we might want to be aware of? Any controlled burns, anything like that?
We will be planning some controlled burns come springtime. We're going to do some burning for basically the public. They, we contract a couple of people that will burn with. But nothing is set in stone at this point.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mergan?
All right, thank you. First of all, if you notice, the flags are at half-staff. President Biden did order them down due to the 500,000 deaths for the COVID. We did have a failure on well number six last week. We do have somebody in here repairing it, but we can expect that bill to be in the range of $5,000 to $6,000 somewheres. Obviously, park reservations are open in City Hall here at any time if they want to come in and do so. Reminder to residents, the first quarter here is again the quarter where your sewer rates are set. So if you're going to conserve water throughout the year, this is the period to do it. Looking a little bit towards spring, obviously, spring cleanup will be held the April the 24th at the Township Hall again. A few months back, or last summer, we did some repairs on the library outside wall. This winter, we did take off the back portion of that wall. There was a little bit of, a few issues there, so they have all been corrected, repainted. And we may look at painting the entire interior of the library. It's been quite a number of years since that's been completed. On the bright side, snow budget is really looking healthy for this year. And the Stearns County Solid Waste, the focus group, they are planning a tour of the Pope Douglas County Waste-to-Energy Facility. They have no date on that yet, but they said likely it'll be sometime spring or summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mergan? All right, hearing none. Mr. Oliver Fieh?
Well, first of all, during the E-DAP meeting, I think, you know, Councilmember Soini and Councilmember Brick were with me. But I want to highlight something that I think is of importance because we keep on being asked about what kind of support businesses can have. And the E-DAP committee is available to support, and they're willing to support businesses if they're struggling or having a hard time. So any struggling business can, you know, come to us and make a request, and we'll look into it and try to help them out. The other thing that we discussed was Ron Mergan and I went around last week to speak with a few businesses to gauge their interests and if we were to do an expansion or a new industrial park. So so far, feedback has been pretty positive. Last week, I also went to visit the community center, the one that's behind City Hall here, and got a chance to see the operation and all the good work they do. And on a budget side, I discussed with Verizon ways for us to reduce our monthly billing with them. So right now, I think we're going to have a monthly cost reduction with Verizon of $108 per month going forward. That's it.
All right. Any questions there?
Who was it that you said the businesses should contact if they look for bad interest in the COVID adjustment?
They can contact me.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Oops, Tarek, right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I'll give you my details after if you're interested.
Okay, I'll take your answer. Start in the round.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the adoption of our consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the five meetings listed there on page one. Payment of the vouchers totaling $185,256.43, along with sending staff to the Emerald Ashmore Field Workshop. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I heard Hertzberg first, so do you want to second that?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hertzberg, seconded by Soini to adopt the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Onto new business. The replat of Outlet A of Paydelco Railroad bed. Guess I would turn this over to all of Mr. Oliver Fieh. Who wants to bring us up to speed on this?
Go ahead. You're more up to speed than I am.
I could, I mean, I could talk a little bit about it if you want.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, those are the plans.
I think Jennifer received an application. First, we received a concept plan, and now I believe she's received also an application for, to schedule a hearing on approval of the preliminary plat. The concept here is, I guess, if you look on page 12, I think is, it's a strip that runs up the middle of our industrial park lots out there. And that's, the old railroad spur used to run through there. It's not been there for many years. It's just been, been there and was owned by parties who originally made this plat. Still had the fee title to that. It's my understanding that Lewis Industries is acquiring, perhaps has acquired, that strip of land, intends to subdivide it so that the adjoining parcels will be deeded. The part of that lot that abuts theirs will be attached for all purposes in the future. That's, that's the plan, I think. I think that's an accurate summary of what they're intending to do there.
Yeah, and there are other businesses affected by it, and they all are going to share in whatever the portion is.
And the hearing was set at the planning commission meeting for March 15th.
For the replat?
For the con- yeah, for a-
To approve the preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat, right.
So they'll, the planning will hold a public hearing on March 15th on the application for, to approve the-
Preliminary plat, yeah.
The final plat will be forthcoming. I don't know when, but I assume within a month or so after the preliminary. But we're good to go here on the concept plan, even though that's scheduled for a public hearing?
There's no public hearing for the concept plan. The concept plan is just, as it states, a concept. So this is the time where the city does not have any desire for this to happen, would be to step in now and say that they're not expending money that's unnecessary in either application fees or surveying, things like that.
Any other comments or discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve the concept plan of the replat of Outlet A, Paydelco.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Soini, seconded by Councilmember Tealyn to approve the concept plan of the replat of Outlet A, Paydelco. Any further discussion on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. All right. The Moguswelly Farm Lease.
Okay, thank you. We did take bids on the, this is the airport property. We do have 95 acres out there. We did receive three bids in from local farmers. And obviously, the high bid is from Moguswelly at $1,2750. It was very competitive, as the next bid was $1,260. It is 95 acres, and it is for a three-year period. Are any questions?
Is there any questions for Ron? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion on that.
I'll make the motion to approve the farm lease cash rent agreement between the City of Painsel and Moguswelly LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, to approve the farm lease cash rent agreement between the City of Painsel and Moguswelly, Moguswelly LLC. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. I'll call a question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? That carries. All right, onto the gazebo park improvements.
Okay, thank you. During the completion of the park comp plan last fall, members had recommended to replace the cedar shakes on the gazebo. I don't think that's ever been done, and the gazebo's got to be at least 40-some-odd years old. We did get some prices here, and the low being from JP Evans. I do need to update these prices. They did have, they were, the prices I did get were from last fall. I didn't get back to the park board until now, and they did recommend it. But the price increase is about $400, and it's just on materials. So the end price would be $7,146.21. And both contractors utilize the same lumber yards. So there would be the same increase on both ends. We did look at shingles, going back to cedar shakes, and steel. Members at first were very sold on going with the steel, as it's going to last longer. But then, after discussing how long will the gazebo actually be there, it's been questioned over the years, the usefulness of the gazebo. And at some point in the future, we may want to replace it with something else. So at that point, they recommended going with these shingles. Along with that is, we were going to put a fascia and soffit on the restrooms. So that is the other portion of this. And that is included in that price.
And that updated price was $7,146.21?
Yes.
I have a question for you, Ron.
Yes.
You think the shingles are going to outlast the gazebo as such?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I was wondering if it's going to have to be redone somewhere down the road if you want to go with something-
I mean, shingles, they should last there 30 years, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ron? All right, do we have a motion on this?
Motion to approve the quote from JP Evans Construction in the amount of $6,000, oh, $7,146.21 for shingles.
Okay. With a motion from Soini, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. To approve the quote from JP Evans Construction in the amount of $7,146.21 for shingles. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Moving on to the Summer Concert in the Park Series.
Another item from the park board. We will again host the, recommend sponsoring the Concert in the Park Series out at Veterans Park. I guess we've, over the years, heard nothing but positive comments on that, and would see absolutely no reason why not to continue the support of it. And there will only be three dates out there, but it is from July 1st to July 22nd. So, and that is a recommendation from the park board.
Things like this year especially, it seems like a good idea. All right.
I'll make the motion to allow Painsel Community Education to use the Veterans Park Shelter, Kitchen, and Outdoor Seating at no cost. However, the city will be listed as a concert series sponsor for the Summer Concert Park Series to be held Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 9:00, July 1st till July 22nd, 2021.
We have a motion from Soini. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. To allow Painsel Community Ed to use the Veterans Park Shelter, Kitchen, and Outdoor Seating as listed on the action sheet. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. All right, Ron, again, the equipment purchase.
Okay, thank you again. This was discussed at the park board and at our working session. And the park board, their comments mainly were that we should try to reduce the amount that we are mowing. And I got the working session, the comment also came up that we should try to look for a used unit. Well, we are actually trying to do both. We did go back and, to the contractor, to the vendor, and said, yes, we want to try and look for a used unit. And they did come back. This is a promotional unit. We sent a couple of people down to look at it. As you can see, the cost on it of $77,000 is, it's a $38,000 savings there, and it only has 260 hours on, and it does come with a full two-year warranty on it. So it'd be very hard to turn this unit down. It is a complete four-wheel drive. It's a 72-horse motor on there with a 16-foot cut. An enclosed cab, and it's got the three, and each deck is independently operated, so you can operate anyone at any time. I totally agree with the park board and the council members looking at ways to reduce the amount that we are mowing. That is something they still fully intend to do. But at this time, I don't think we can pass this unit up. The salesman said if we don't take it, it will likely be gone by the end of the week. So they did put a hold on for us. So I felt it was definitely worthwhile bringing forward to council. I did contact a couple of members of the park board, and they tended to agree that, yes, let's move forward with it, but still look at trying to reduce what we're mowing. As you can see there, where we would, the funds would come from the sewer, the water, or the stormwater utility, and the park. So it's a unit that would be used entirely around the city. Also looking at trying to reduce what we're mowing. We're still, we're always going to have the airport. We're always going to have the wastewater facility, and that is our two biggest areas right there. So I guess it'd be my recommendation that we do proceed with it.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I remember a while back, I cannot put the number of years on it, but at one point in time, there was livestock out at the irrigation ponds. I think there were sheep.
There were sheep. That is correct.
Okay. If you were looking at reducing what was mowed, is there any reason why this option might not have been looked into?
Going, going back to the sheep?
Yeah.
Liability on trying to keep them in.
Okay.
That would be the main one.
I was just wondering on that. I've had a few others ask me about, at one time, I remembered sheep or goats it was. I didn't know what it was.
So it was both out there at one time.
Okay.
Even with them out there, you still do have to mow periodically.
Sure.
Otherwise, it looks like-
Yeah.
The weeds.
I understand. Another question that I have with this is that, with this new mower, being that it's going to be idle for, during the winter months, any way an attachment could be included with that, of say, a snow blower?
Yes, absolutely. Have you noticed, it does come with an enclosed cab.
Great.
So yes, the snow blower, I believe, I don't have it on here. We did look into it, but I believe it's about $8,000.
Okay.
It is a possibility.
Okay. And the last thing I have for you is, with the old mower, is it just that it wasn't doing the job, or what's the reason why?
The old mower is a pole-type Citrix mower.
Yep.
It has a 17-foot cut. It is extremely labor-intensive-
Okay.
Trying to maintain it. There's about three sets of drives, so that means there are six sets of knuckles on there. They all have to be pulled off.
Okay.
Yeah, when that comes in for maintenance, it takes two men, almost six hours.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of comments. I'm in favor of the purchase of this. The biggest thing, well, I worked for the city in the summer for about eight years. And mowing the banks of the lagoon is how we got by without the tractor tipping over is beyond me. And this unit with the wings was very, very stable. And so if you look at the loss of life or workman's comp, it's a pretty cheap decision. And then I kind of disagreed with not mowing because when you quit mowing, the willows start growing. And that's half the reason we mow. All that we do is to keep the willows down. We spent one summer, three, four weeks in one of the drainage ponds getting rid of willows of three, four-inch in diameter. So if you can keep that cutting them down is, is why we mow a lot of what we do.
Ron, I guess one question I had is, do you anticipate this, it's a narrower cut, but overall, do you think it's going to save any man-hours, or?
Oh, absolutely will, yes.
Okay, is that just primarily through maintenance, or also in operation?
Both. It's, maintenance is going to be probably less than half, and also the cutting speed on this greatly exceeds what we have. Even though it's a foot less, yeah, this unit can cut grass. There is no, I'd say the other one, you know, it says this can cut up to 20 acres an hour. The other one, I bet you we wouldn't get 10 acres.
I think we went over it at the Park and Tree Board meeting, but barring some strange happening with this, or how long did you say that you anticipated this lasting the city?
I would think this would be a 20-year investment.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, there is some value in the old mower, yep, to somebody.
So that was going to be my next question. There's talk of a trade-in on here, and is that included in the price?
No, at this time, I think our best option would be to declare the Citrix surplus property and advertise it as such.
Okay. All right. And then you had a question.
What's willow?
Willow trees.
I mean, why are they a problem? Aren't they beautiful?
Uh, no.
I mean, I, I didn't know why. Are they considered like a nuisance here?
When they're in the wrong location, then they become a problem. If they're inside of our pond or something.
It just seems like a bank that he was saying was dangerous, and that people could have slipped on cutting. The thing about trees is they root, and it solidifies the ground. It just seemed like an ecological, natural thing. I was just curious.
In the right location, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, my bad.
I have one more question for you, Ron. Being that this, if you're looking at it lasting about 20 years, would there be a possibility of getting something more than a two-year warranty? Because this is quite a, this is a, I'm thinking, well, $77,000.
Yes.
And if something, after the two years breaks, it could be quite an expenditure. So I'm just wondering if, just for a little bit extra.
I can surely look into it, absolutely. It's a good point.
That's just a good, that's just a thought, that maybe you could take a look into.
Any other comments or discussion regarding the mower? Otherwise, is there a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to approve purchase of the used Toro Groundmaster 5910 in the amount of $77,000, with funds to come from the following. 40% sewer CIP, $30,800 is that amount. 20% water CIP, $15,400. 20% stormwater utility, $15,400. And 20% park, $15,400.
We have a motion from Hertzberg.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Soini. To approve the purchase of a used Toro mower in the amount of $77,000, with funds to come from 40% out of the sewer CIP and 20% each out of the water storm utility and park CIP. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Okay, on to the agriculture renter homestead tax rate program.
Okay, this is a program we found about, out this spring on our city-owned land out on the irrigation sites or, and/or the airport. Obviously, the taxes now for the city are non-homesteaded. If we go along with the SEER program, the taxes to the renter would become homesteaded. So there would be a reduction at approximately 50%. But looking at the program and the renters, they are asking for one-half of our savings, which on the irrigation site that we'd be looking at, the current taxes are around that $2,700. And homesteaded, they would be approximately $13,920. And so we would each split that at $6,960 each. There's also a stipulation in there that if the renter, if their total valuation goes over that $1.89 million, that is the threshold where they are no longer eligible. that is the threshold where they are no longer eligible. We will qualify 100% for the site on the irrigation, but then it would not be 100% on the airport as renters would go over that threshold. Once this is approved, we will get the information to the county and they will make all the final determinations. And I believe we would also be writing a contract which would come back to the council for the final approval on this program. But the, but the assessors, they didn't wanna go forward unless they knew that the city was going to be a part of it.
And this would, and this would not be for this year, but it would start next year, correct?
This would be for 2021 taxes payable in 2022.
Yep.
The way I understood it, yes.
Yes. I think you gotta get it in before fall so they can approve it.
Yep.
Is this something we have to redo every year or does it carry through with the property?
I think we would wanna draft a contract that would match the existing contracts and renew it. Then obviously, the dollar amounts are gonna change every year.
So they're three-year leases, so we'd want it to run, run with the lease. And then I think Ron and I talked about the fact that historically, we've been a little bit slow on the renewals and we're gonna need to start renewing them before it gets too late in the fall for the following year so that we can know who the renter is each year and whether the program works for them or not. Theoretically, there could be landowners who have too much, who are over that cap and it wouldn't work for them, but for people that it does work for, it's great. You know, if it does, it's, it's good for both the city and for them. Alright.
If we can save some money on taxes, that's always good.
Alright, one's different. Yeah?
I would just warn the city that a lot of times when businesses or owners are seeking the Homesteading Act, they are and over their heads with private creditors. And it's important to do a full evaluation of all the properties within that district that's zoned for because it protects them from not just tax liability, but there are some private credit matters that companies I'm just saying, be careful for the city because it sounds like it's advantageous, but in some ways, I mean, it's just, it's, it's better managed in a micro way rather than macro. Because the smaller it is, the more independent evaluation can occur between the homeowner and the city to know what liability there already exists. Because some of that information is a problem, it depends on what kind of incorporation that that business is.
Right. Alright, well, that's good information. Is there a motion to participate or not?
I'll make the motion to authorize participation in the Agriculture Renter Homestead Tax Rate Program for Mogus Welly for the land rented at the airport with parcel number 70. Dot 38646 dot 0540 and irrigation land parcel number 37 dot 24875 dot 0500.
A motion by Soini, is there a second?
You all second.
Seconded by Councilmember Tealyn. To authorize participation in the Agriculture Renter Homestead Tax Rate Program for the Mogus Welly land with parcel numbers on the action sheet. Any further discussion on these? Alright, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Alright, Ron, you can take your breath. Chief Wagner? You want to take it from the car?
Thank you. I want to sell another car. Ron says I need to give him a space back, so. We do have another forfeiture that has gone through the complete process and we've obtained the title for that, so let's dispose of this vehicle the same way we've done the last two, which is through MinBid. It seemed to work out pretty well for us, so. Just looking for authorization to sell it and then accept that final bid and move on from that one.
Like you said, we did use, this was a new service to us, what, four months ago, I think we sold the other ones?
Yep.
You said that worked out well?
It did. I mean, you know, we got, what, almost $4,000 between the two vehicles and it really took a lot of the stuff off of us. I just gotta send them down some stuff and they handle it from there, so.
Alright, any further discussion or is there a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to approve the sale of 2003 Mazda Protege by, via MinBid, online auction except the highest bid with the funds being split according to state statute and placed in the Department's Forfeits or Fund for future needs.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Soini, seconded by Brick to approve the sale of the 2003 Mazda Protege via MinBid and accept the highest bid and split the funds according to statute. Any further discussion on that?
Paul, did you book this? What kind of value?
I didn't, but it's not gonna have a lot. It's beat.
That's the miles on all three?
Yeah.
It's kinda what we get, okay.
Unfortunately, we don't get the nice ones.
I know.
Alright, any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Okay, back to Ron with the water tower painting.
Okay, thank you. Um, the water tower, it was constructed in 1979, so it is 42 years old. It is a steel structure. And I think everybody knows when you mix water and steel, what happens? Obviously, it rusts. It has been, I think it's 16, 17 years since it was repainted. And at this time, this came from the Public Works Committee. Bolton and Mink did a study last summer and with the recommendation that we would proceed this spring with bidding of this. The options were, we could just wash the interior or the exterior at a cost of estimated at $10,000 pressure wash, spot repair and do some overcoat to the exterior and spot repair the interior at an estimated cost of 150,000. Or we can do a complete blast and re-coat it at 450. Or if we would ever build a new tank, which was discussed at one point, build a new concrete tank. And the nice thing about concrete is they never have to be painted. So obviously, if we ever do rebuild, it would like, very likely be a concrete tank. But that cost would be 1.25 million. So that, we're gonna put on the back burner and we feel very strongly and the recommendation from our engineer is to go with the option number two, pressure wash and spot repair at an estimated cost of 150,000. Chuck, you anything to add?
No, I think, you know, hopefully, we're, we're able to get another 10 years out of that tank, the coating system on that tank by doing another overcoat. What we would do is get quotes for this work since it's below the threshold and we'd actually do what's called an X-cut tape test prior to the overcoat just to make sure that the adhesion to the other paint would be suitable.
It's a question we can get into more later, but I assume there's money in the CIP budget for that. CIP?
Yes, the water CIP, I believe, is just over a million dollars, right around there.
Alright. So the request is to just send this out for bids for right now? Is there any comments or a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to solicit quotes for the water tower resurfacing in option two.
I have a motion by Brick, seconded by Councilmember Hertzberg. To solicit quotes for the water tower resurfacing, the option number two there on the action sheet. Any discussion on this? Alright, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That carries. Alright, that's it for action this week. Onto our informational. We have our garbage rates from West Central Sanitation, our meeting schedules for March and April, and then the written report that Chief Soini presented to us from the Fire Department. Alright, with that then, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.